And before we start, I'd like to say that we have available hearing. Jenny, what are they?
Yeah, they're assisted hearing devices if anybody needs one. I have them here.
If anybody would like to take advantage of that, just so know that Jenny has them and they're here.
Okay.
All right, my name's Hazel Nurse. I'm the chairman of the board. And to my far left is Jenny Gingras or Dan Planner, Carolyn Regan next to her, Christina Kelleher, John Pizzoni, John Gelsich on my right, Justin Prada, our town council on my right, and Kristina, Kristen Berlinger, who's acting as our secretary of administration tonight. We are being televised by Westboro TV. I'd like to thank them for that and appreciate that. And I'd just like to point out, I think you all have a copy of the agenda. The first matter on here is the application for a special permit for a drive-through coffee shop located at 210 Turnpike Road. We have looked at this matter and the hearing was closed at our September meeting. We did not follow up at that time because we did not have a full board. We will be tonight discussing the findings and conditions of such a permit. The public hearing was closed in September, so there will be no public comment on this matter. Be aware that the board has reviewed all the information which received at the preceding hearing back in the spring and winter of 2024, 25, and also in the hearing that we have had since we reopened this. Justin, maybe if you could just give me two minutes or a minute and a half on why they were before us again.
Sure. As I mentioned last time, this was a unique situation where a special permit was denied with three votes in favor. And to oppose, you need four for the grant of a special permit. The decision was written in a way that read as an approval. And that wasn't really anyone's fault. It's just that's how the decision happened to be written. When it was then appealed by the denied applicant, the court remanded it to the board because when a special permit is granted or denied, you need to have factual basis for its grant or its denial. And because the decision didn't have a factual basis for what was ultimately its denial, the court remanded it to the board for further consideration.
Thank you. We will start out by reviewing the general facts and findings of fact on this matter. I'm going to ask Jenny to put those up on the board so we all have a chance to look at them. We have received as board members a draft copy of these, and we will be discussing them tonight. This will be the first part of our agenda. The second part will be then to discuss the conditions of a special permit in this particular matter. So Jenny, if you would go through the general conditions and the findings of fact.
Sure, so starting with the general facts.
You can get closer to the microphone. We know that it works. Closer to the microphone, we can all hear.
Okay. Okay. That better? Okay. And again, we also have the assisted hearing devices if you need them. I know this room's very echoey. So for the general facts, I have them up on the screen, but we, there are typical facts. The owner of the property, the land is in the highway business zoning district. It's located in an area that has commercial uses, but also about some residential uses. The applicant's proposing a drive-through coffee shop. The local zoning regulations require a special permit for the drive-through component of a restaurant use in the highway business zoning district. And under the bylaw, a special permit shall be granted unless, because of a condition peculiar to the particular case, but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district, appears that nuisance hazard or congestion will be There's also a general fact that we did receive the public comments about the traffic to and from the project site. The applicant had submitted a detailed traffic impact study, which was, which provided the board with an analysis of the potential traffic impacts. And then we also went through the peer review process for that as well. Those are the general facts. Do you want me to go into the findings or?
Please. Unless there are any board questions about the general facts, if not, we'll move on to the findings of fact.
Okay. So the board finds that the proposed use of a coffee shop with a drive-through aligns with other uses within the highway business zoning district and will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. Ten, the project will serve the community need. The special permit will allow a new business at the site, which would result in the revitalization of an underutilized commercial property in Westboro and will overall provide an improved use of the site compared to the existing conditions. Mast dot has confirmed that this intersection is not considered a high crash location and is not prioritized for safety improvements. Mast dot has also stated that the project will not require an indirect access permit. The town's traffic peer review consultant has confirmed that the capacity analysis, safety analysis, traffic report, and supporting data indicate that the traffic flow is not anticipated to be negatively affected by the proposed new use. The number of parking spaces meets the zoning requirements and the drive-through configuration and queuing plan meets the requirements of the planning board rules and regulations. It is not anticipated that there will be adverse fiscal impacts on town services due to the proposed project and will most likely result in increased tax revenue for the town. In making its decision, the board found no evidence of conditions peculiar to this case that would not be true for similar uses on other sites in the same district. Overall, the proposed redevelopment of the site will result in a revitalization of an underutilized commercial property in Westboro and will overall provide an improved use of the site compared to the existing conditions. As a result of the findings listed, the board finds that the proposed project is not anticipated to create substantial harm to the neighborhood or derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to now entertain any comments board members might have on these findings of fact. And I'm going to start with John Pizzoni. Do you have any comments on this?
No comments.
Christina?
No comments. No comments.
Caroline?
No comments from me.
John? And I had no comments on these. All right.
That's the vote that we will be taking tonight. We are reading the information that we are voting on. This is part of the decision.
Right. Could I have a motion then to accept the findings of fact as set forth?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any comments? All in favor? All right, the findings of fact are approved by a vote of five to zero. Jenny, would you go through, we will now discuss the conditions of approval for this particular special permit.
Okay.
Jenny, would you run through these, please?
And these conditions are the same conditions as the previous permit, except for, I believe it's condition forty-one, which as we previously stated, the town council and the applicant's attorney had discussed.
Okay, I had, I don't know whether other board members have any comments. I had a couple of comments, but let's go through them all and then we can discuss any comments.
Okay. The applicant will record this decision with the registry of deeds. The approval is limited to the site plans submitted. The onsite trash containment and dumpster facility will be in the area as shown on the plans. In accordance with their operation and maintenance plan, regular maintenance of the parking area shall be performed, including the lane guidance markings and stop lines. The planning board reserves its right to hire outside consultants and/or inspectors as necessary, which the cost will be borne by the applicant. In the event the permit's not exercised, it will basically expire after three years. The applicant is responsible for filing any other permits with the town or a federal entity. The planning board acknowledges that the plans and this decision may be subject to modification, so any modifications will need to come back to the planning board. Failure to comply with these conditions will be considered a violation and grounds for revocation of this approval. Prior to construction, the applicant shall provide a complete construction schedule. Prior to construction, a pre-construction meeting between town staff shall be held. And as contemplated in the BWAL feasibility study, the applicant shall grant easement to the town for the BWAL easement as shown on the plan. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, shop drawings of all materials shall be submitted to the DPW. The applicant shall provide the town an erosion and sediment control performance security in the amount of $5,000. A copy of this decision needs to be kept on-site in a location that's highly visible. All construction activities will comply with the zoning bylaw and the rules and regulations. Unobstructed road access with a width of no less than twenty feet shall be provided during construction for first responders. Any work in the right of way is subject to the DPW rules and regulations, and agents of the planning board shall have the right to enter the site and gather any information necessary. During construction, the site cannot cause dust or debris to leave the premises, and we always suggest keeping a water truck on-site. A daily cleanup of construction debris shall be required. The applicant shall provide the appropriate erosion control measures. The hours of construction are standard hours of construction per the general bylaw. All construction-related traffic shall exit the site onto, from Park Street to Route Nine. No parking of construction vehicles will be permitted on Park Street. The stormwater management plan will be reviewed and approved by the DPW prior to the building permit application. The applicant will make any modifications where necessary according to the DPW. The applicant will check all stormwater and erosion control management features before the end of each construction day. And the applicant will be responsible for providing the appropriate erosion control methods in the stormwater permit, which could include silt fences and straw wattle. And then a stormwater permit will need to be submitted. For fire protection, all locked gates will require the installation of a rapid-access key box. All private fire hydrants shall be painted red. The outdoor lighting needs to conform to the zoning bylaw. And then the lights need to be shielded to prevent any spillage onto adjacent property lines. For the off-street parking area, the applicant shall construct the sidewalks and crosswalks as shown on the plans for pedestrian safety. All sidewalk designs will be submitted to the town engineer and DPW for a review and approved prior to construction. For landscaping and snow storage, the applicant will submit all lands, will submit, complete, I'm sorry, will complete all landscaping per the plans provided with the application. Until the final certificate of occupancy is received, the applicant's responsible for maintaining those plantings. All trees shall have root ball cages removed and inspected by the tree warden prior to backfill. Any landscaping identified as being transplanted will be subject to full replacement, and then the applicant will provide adequate snow storage. For traffic mitigation, the applicant will cooperate with the town to petition Mast Dot to widen the shoulder along Turnpike Road, Route Nine, eastbound, to allow for deceleration leading up to Park Street. To offset future costs to the town for improvement, the applicant shall make a contribution to the cost of improvements in the amount of $10,000. Said contribution shall be required prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The condition is subject to the approval and funding by Mast Dot and may be fulfilled as part of the Section Two BWAL design. If the funds for the project are not expended within ten years, money will be reallocated for any pedestrian improvements that serve this development at the discretion of the planning board. Do you want me to read the current condition forty-one?
Yeah.
The one that was from the last decision?
No, we're on the new one now.
Okay. I have to pull up my memo, I'm sorry. The planning board shall conduct a review of the drive-through coffee shop one year after the commencement of business. The purpose of this review is to evaluate whether traffic queuing or circulation associated with the drive-through has resulted in onsite or offsite operational issues, including incidents reported to the police department. If the board finds that there are no significant queuing incidents that have occurred as reported by the police department, no further action shall be required. If the board finds that significant queuing issues have occurred, the applicant shall propose a mitigation plan for board approval. If the board finds that queuing issues related to the drive-through have resulted in a significant degradation of existing operational conditions of Park Street or the Route Nine-Park Street intersection, the board may require additional mitigation measures, which could include one or more of the following. The submission of an updated traffic study at the expense of the applicant. In coordination with the town, a request to Mast Dot for signage on Route Nine intended to improve driver awareness of the Park Street intersection, with the applicant cooperating and not unreasonably objecting to Mast Dot or town requirements, and/or working with the town and Mast Dot to evaluate, and if deemed necessary, implement improvements such as shoulder widening or minor geometric modifications along Park Street near its intersection with Route Nine to improve traffic flow and reduce potential queuing impacts related to the drive-through. A few more conditions. Signage and pavement markings, all directional pavement markings and business signage for the coffee shop shall be installed in locations as shown on the site plans. It's understood that the existing multi-tenant standing sign should be modified as shown on the plan. Minimum fourteen days prior to the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall contact the planning office to schedule a site visit to review conformance with the board's approval. And then prior to the first certificate of occupancy, all plans shall be verified through Asbel plans.
Okay, thank you. John Gelsich mentioned to me that it might be helpful to have him explain a little bit about why we've gone through these conditions to make it clear to the public.
Sure. So I realize what we're going through right now, all of us kind of know the process. We've been able to talk to town council and ask questions and all that kind of stuff. So just your question kind of sprung that in my mind, and I figured it might be helpful to talk about why we're here, where we are, and how we got here. So this special permit was applied for previously, and we wrote the decision in the affirmative, that it would be approved, right? And so then the board has to vote on that decision. And we can only get three votes in favor of that decision. So it did not pass because you needed two-thirds majority for special permits. So effectively, the special permit was denied. There was no alternative motion offered to deny the permit, so because it wasn't approved, it was denied. The applicant appealed it to court, and court said, or was it land court? Land court said, you have to have reasons why you're either approving it or not approving it. And the reasons that we had were written to approve it. And so it didn't meet the court's standard in that decision, that we had the findings to support the decision. So they sent it back to us, and we, so what we've read, the findings and the conditions are effectively the same as what they were previously. So it's all the same stuff, except for the condition forty-one, which changed, and that was something that was worked on with town council and the applicant's town council.
And also with, feed in from what we've heard from various members of the community.
Right. And so we had this hearing, we had to reopen this hearing, we got public comment in September, and then we closed the public hearing. So now we have to actually make the decision. And so that's what we're voting on now. The findings are the facts that support the decision that the board is going to make. Now we've just read the conditions, so if this special permit is approved, these conditions would be in effect, and they would essentially give the bounds of what that special permit, aside from what they're allowed to do, can do, and what the obligations of the applicant are, and what the obligations of the town are in relation to the special permit. So that's.
So the reason that we're discussing this tonight is that if any of us have any changes that we would like to make to these, we will now discuss those particular changes.
So, yeah, that was just a quick special permit one-on-one, so that everyone knows where we are. I don't think we want to take any questions, because that could turn into a whole thing, but yeah.
All right. Yeah, the public hearing was closed. I had a couple of things that I thought I would just bring up to start with this. Mainly the condition I agree with, I would like to look at condition number twenty-two, which involves the use of the times the construction are being held. This project backs up to residential properties, and I would very much like to see no construction on Sundays and holidays. I think this would be of a benefit to the community. I know generally when, the language we have in here, which says unless specific approval is obtained in advance from the Westboro Chief of Police, that often does not protect the community as such. And so I would very much like to see added to this that there would be no construction on Sundays and holidays. And the other thing that I would like to see, quite frankly, is that the construction on Saturdays would be from eight AM to one PM. I think that this would help the traffic on Park Street on weekends when people are out, and it's something that I would like to see added to that condition. The second thing that I would like to bring up is, one other question I had here.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yeah.
So I'm making the notes, so are you, because right now, Sundays and holidays, you're not allowed to do construction under our general bylaw.
Except.
Except, so are you saying to remove that except?
Yes.
Okay. Starting at unless, probably. It'll be days of no operation.
Yeah.
Period, stop, yeah.
Yeah, and also on Monday through Friday and eight AM to one PM on Saturdays.
Okay.
I think this will help things that are going on, on that. The other thing is on traffic mitigation, paragraph forty, on the second sentence, where it's second line, where it says, "The applicant shall cooperate with the town to petition Mast Dot to widen the shoulders," add an S, "along Turnpike Road, Route Nine, eastbound, to allow for deceleration and acceleration exiting of Park Street onto Route Nine." We do follow up later when we talk about in forty-one, but we're talking about both, we're all familiar with the intersection, and if it's widened on one side, it should be widened on the other side. So just for clarification, I would just like to add that language in paragraph forty.
Can you just, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? So widen the shoulders along Turnpike Road, eastbound?
To allow for deceleration and acceleration exiting Park Street onto Route Nine. To allow for deceleration and acceleration exiting Park Street onto Route 9, or leading up to, I mean, I just wanted, it's the acceleration lane that I'm also looking at versus the deceleration lane.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Then, does it come out of 41?
No, it would stay, it would stay in 40. It's two, this is just describing it, I think, in 40.
Yeah.
And 41 really is more specific on what would be done.
Okay. But this traffic mitigation, 41 is a year after. Is this also a year after, just for my clarity?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that was, I think that was my main thing. My only other question to the board was the question of truck traffic entering. Is there a possibility, and Jenny, I don't know if this is true, is that any construction vehicles, and I'm talking about trucks, should enter Park Street from Route 9 and not from Milk Street?
I think it, I think that's in here.
Is that in there?
Yeah.
It talks about construction traffic, but I'm not sure whether that was specific.
It says that they'll exit the site onto Route 9, but we can not, we can change it to say enter.
Yeah, it just said exit, and I'd like to see it also say entrance. Because this would prevent heavy truck traffic along Milk Street, and along, from Milk Street, onto Park Street, onto the construction site, which I think was a concern of the public, having trucks going down that street. So, that was one of the thing I wondered about. So, those were the three things that I kind of came up with when I was looking at the conditions to see for more specification, and really to help the neighborhood remain in its residential way.
Okay.
Okay. John Brizani, do you have any comments or questions on the conditions?
No, I don't, but I agree with the changes that you wanted to make to them.
Christina?
No questions. I guess my comments are, I think we've done quite a bit of research, conversations, being in, at the intersection. We have quite a bit of, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, if there, if something, I know, if something doesn't, if it's not working out to the benefit of, yeah, well, I, there are many contingencies, yes. I think, I acknowledge that this, this has been, this has been, it's a difficult spot, right, for many reasons. There has been though ample data to suggest that we can't currently prove, right, that this is a bigger issue. I am pleased with the number of contingencies that we have here, I think it's quite extensive, and it leaves a lot to the discretion of the board to kind of take a review of the property.
We also have to remember that if situation changes within the, before the year, the planning department, the DPW, and the police department are all watching this.
Yes.
So, that consequently, a special permit can be pulled at any time if situation changes significantly. So, we don't have to wait a year. It isn't like...
Right.
We have to wait an entire year if the situation changes.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Caroline?
I don't have any questions. I do also agree with your comments as well.
John Gelson?
Yeah, no other comments. Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion then?
In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Sections 2.3 and 5.1 Attachment 1 Use Regulation Table of the Town of Westboro Zoning Bylaw, I move that the planning board vote to approve the special permit for 210 Turnpike Road to allow a drive-through restaurant use in the Highway Business BA zoning district, subject to the conditions that were previously read aloud.
And the additions there, too?
And as modified by the chair.
Second. All right. Any further discussion?
Can I just make a comment?
Yep.
Hazel, I really do appreciate, and we, the comment about we've, we've read everyone's comments, concerns, is incredibly accurate. I think we've worked very hard to try and find a balance between the neighborhood and the existing zoning. It's an empty parking lot right now, and in terms of like intended, intended use. So, I, I do appreciate the feedback from the community, and really take it to heart.
Any other comments from the board? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? It's 5-0 to grant the special permit. Thank you very much. Anyone who's involved in this is free to leave now, as we will, before we continue. And we'll take a five-minute adjournment. All right. All right, we'll go back into session. Thank you very much for staying. The second item on our agenda is 220 Turnpike Road. Do we have someone here for that matter?
I don't see the applicant here.
I don't either.
But, I mean, I'm happy to give an overview, it's an A and R, so...
Sure, go ahead.
So, this property is the property that the planning board previously approved for a site plan review for Everrise Financial. They were going to have two office buildings and then a garage of sorts on the back of the property. But now, and this was indicated during the site plan review, that he was going to do an A and R to divide it into two lots, but maintain ownership of both lots for now, with the potential to sell Lot 1, which would have that other building on it.
Is the ownership in the same company?
Yes.
Or is there two different?
Same.
Is there a problem with the merger on that?
No.
Under land law?
No, because they're two conforming lots.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? If not, we'll just adjourn for the moment till we see an applicant.
Do we just want to move forward with that?
Or do we need, can we move forward without the applicant?
I don't think you need the applicant.
Oh, okay, fine.
For this one, yeah, but it's up to you.
Yeah, no, as far as I'm concerned, I'm just surprised no one's here.
Yeah.
All right, are there any questions on this A and R?
No.
If not, could I have a motion, please?
I move that the planning board endorse the A and R plan entitled Plan of Land in Westboro Mass Prepared for 10x at 220 Turnpike LLC Prepared by Topper Land Survey, dated October 24th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next matter is 50 Flanders Road, which has requested a continuation until 11/18/25. Jenny, perhaps you could bring us up to date on this matter?
Yes, so, we did receive comments back from the peer reviewer, and the applicant did respond, but we didn't receive them until late last week. So, we sent those to the peer reviewer to review them, to ensure that everything that they asked for was revised on the plan, and staff also needs additional time to review it. So, we would like a continuance, and the applicant did submit the formal request as well.
Are there any questions from any board members on this matter? If not, could I have a motion to continue this matter?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? This matter is continued until November 18th, 2025. The next matter is 165 Flanders Road, and they are also requesting continuation, this one, until December 2nd, 2025. Jenny, you want to bring us up to date on this matter?
Very similar. The peer review comments were received, and the applicant wanted a little more time to review. Also, they do have to go through Conservation Commission, and the timing just didn't line up quite right with their plans to revise, or make the revisions that they needed to. So, they're asking for a continuation until December 2nd.
Okay. Any board questions on this matter? If not, could I have a motion? Good move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right, this matter, 165 Flanders Road is continued until December 2nd, 2025. The next matter is writings 2, 44 Libby Lane, a continuation has been requested until Jenny, anyone brings up to date on that matter?
Yes, so, the applicant, we had advised him that based on the plan that he submitted, that he would need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a variance for the sideyard setback that they were requesting a waiver from. Under the zoning bylaw for open space residential, the planning board can only issue a waiver for the front yard setback. So, after we advised the applicant of that, they came back and decided to modify their plans to only request a front yard setback reduction, but they're working on those revised plans and should have them to the board for the next meeting on November 18th.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board on this matter?
And in the draft motion, I just noticed that I put full site plan review instead of minor modification.
Okay. If there are no questions from the board, could I have a motion to continue this matter as per the applicant's request?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right, this matter is continued also until 11/18/2025. We'll move on to discussion of the town meeting on the zoning article, which did not pass. I will make one comment, and then we can kind of go from there. Interestingly enough, I've had a number of people comment that the problem mainly was a confusion in the fact that the public thought this had to do with the rotary.
Right.
And how it was going to be reconstructed. So, when I was discussing with some people at the town dump, which is where obviously people grab me and pull me aside, I see, and Jenny and I, and John, all talked about the fact that what we would try to do is go out and educate the community on this zoning 101. And so, the thought was to go to the senior center, have an open meeting there, also provide one at the library for an open meeting. If there's any other place that people can think of, those were the two that we kind of came up with. But, to just let, educate the public on what zoning is, and why we are trying to make changes at this point in the code, which is really just for ease and flexibility. We're not changing the requirements under the code, what we're trying to do is make it easier for people to use the code, to do developments in our town, and to promote development. So, that's kind of where we were moving, from that general direction.
Yeah, another thing, another thing we talked about was, I work from home every Friday, so I was going to go to cha-cha from like 9:00 to 11:00, and advertise that there's a planning board member there to, you know, do work, and you can come stop by and ask me questions about zoning or something. So, if there's anyone that wants to do something similar, I would encourage that, or think of other ways to kind of just be available for people to ask questions. I don't know if it's going to be fruitful, but...
We're trying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I can say.
I like the, I like the 101, I think that's really helpful. And then maybe at those already have our next open hearing, date set, right? So, I would assume that people are attending those sessions, they have a vested interest, so making sure we have like all the subsequent dates and follow-ups available ahead of those, so that they can plan accordingly.
Yeah, I think at that point, we would, we probably know the whole process.
Sure.
Timeline.
Yeah.
But that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
One other thing I suddenly thought about is, obviously, we have a very good TV station here, and I think what we need to do probably is just have maybe an open discussion. Jenny, maybe you, John, would take, and you, John, the three of you could sit down and have kind of an open discussion with, I know Shelby runs a program about zoning 101 sometime in, let's say, January, early February, before the next town meeting.
Yeah.
I also think, I thought the presentation was great, you know, there was like a lot that goes into it. I also think, even like if there's a way to simplify it even further, even within, I think we, there were some like acronyms, which were listed on the page, but then when we're speaking and then using like the DPOD, like I think that, I think it's confusing, right? So, if you're not as aware, so maybe we just take another look at how we're explaining that to make sure that it's really clear.
Hazel kind of said it at the beginning, but one of the things we also had talked about is using the hearing process to actually do the zoning 101. So, like, go to the senior center, go to the library, and have those be public input hearings.
Oh, sure, sure.
For the zoning article, just at those locations, and, or, you know, make them just a zoning 101, here's how zoning works, here's how this zoning, you know, relates to that, and then ask questions, rather than have it be the typical, you know, panel.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Talking to, right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think that's, I think it's a good step forward, and I think, you know, this obviously is the lead-up to representing this at the Springtown meeting. Now, are we also looking to present a second change in the municipal? Was the MI in another zoning?
Well, we have right now a consultant working on the sign bylaw, so there was a thought to bring that to March Town Meeting. I don't think that's a rush, though, if we were looking at how many zoning articles to put on there. The other one was looking at the industrial zoning districts.
That was at the industrial, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're, we'll be setting up a meeting with the zoning working group soon to take a look at that and see what that even entails.
Would that make sense, to go at the same time?
Well, it might. I mean, maybe the thing to do is, if we're going to have these kind of open hearings on...
Yeah.
The zoning, then this would be an obvious way to...
A little more holistic, yeah.
Put that forward at that time, maybe to show them how this works and the proposal. Since we've come, you can kind of distill the one that didn't pass more easily now. And if there were a second one, it could show more process, perhaps, in what our thinking was, and how we're moving through the zoning code. So, it might be a combination to be able to do something like that.
Yeah. I guess I feel a little bit like the, the seed was planted, that you can like request that your street not be on, in a specific district. And so, I do think that we should, we should think about how to explain, I think we just need to consider that, because, yeah, I think some people took that as a takeaway.
Yeah, no, I think any, John, any comments on that? I think, yeah, I mean, the more you can try to clarify this to the public, the better off we are. But it's also one of those things that's very difficult to understand.
Yes.
And people also are concerned about how the effect is going to be on them as an individual. And zoning can affect an individual, but sometimes that does not affect the individual.
Yeah.
So, zoning is difficult, always has been. But all we're trying to do is clarify it, and really make it easier for people to understand and take away. The way our zoning code is set up at the moment, it's in all these layers. So, it's very difficult to understand, and I think trying to simplify it is going to make it much easier to move forward with zoning in this community.
Yeah. I think, too, I wonder, I wonder if there's even like a, like a short explainer, there might even be some available, like video content that's like really short, from, what's the state? the state, the planning, I know, it's been a very long day.
They don't have a short video on zoning from the state.
Short video?
No, I'm saying that the state doesn't have.
Yeah, it needs to be.
But that's, I mean, it's not.
Maybe we'll be able to compile something like.
Yeah, I think it's.
About zoning?
Just like, or just like in general, I think information and like watching a 30-second video to try and see the layers.
The problem is trying to get enough detail that it doesn't make it more confusing in that short period of time is difficult.
I think the thing as far as zoning goes, the most helpful thing is almost, is more of a question and answer kind of thing. Because it's really until you begin to discuss it and people come up with the questions, that's really what you need for clarification. So I don't think quite frankly, videos can help. I think it's more question and answers. So if we have, you know, a meeting at the senior center, one at the library, and if we perhaps do one on Westboro TV, try to answer questions, that that's kind of the best way to try to get people's misinformation about zoning answered.
Two thoughts. Westboro TV, if you have any ideas of how we can set this up, please talk to Jenny. And then if anyone has any, received any questions, you've talked to people at the dump, I've heard from people in town, I would say let's compile those questions that we've heard and send them to Jenny so that we can address those upfront moving forward, because if those are the questions people have now, they're going to have them then, and that might head off other questions that they might have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, so we did, you know, we went out to the farmers markets and other events, and we, you know, definitely talked about.
Could you talk into your microphone a little better?
Yes, sorry. We went out to farmers markets and to some of the Westboro Connects events and other places, and we did talk to a lot of people about zoning, very high level, because like John said, it's, it's, it's really hard to explain zoning in a short way. And we do take for granted sometimes, I think, because I've been doing this for so long in interpreting zoning, using acronyms and, you know, saying something that might not be easily understood by someone else in layman's terms. But I, I like the idea of going to the senior center, to the library, and we could even do multiple sessions in addition to the question and answers, but just starting from, from the beginning, like what is, what is a zoning district? Something that simple and have that as the starting point of what does it mean if you're, if you're residential, I'm going to try to put it in layman's terms, what does it mean if your house is located in a business zone?
Yeah.
You know, because that doesn't make sense to someone that doesn't understand zoning understandably, right? So if we break it down like that, I think that might be helpful.
And even more confusing, what if you have a historic house in a business zone? Because that was a question, right?
Yeah.
To, to me, zoning does not have anything to do with historic properties because that's, that's controlled under a separate thing, but people don't know that. And so one of the questions I got at town meeting after it was over was, well, you guys are going to tear down all the historic buildings. And I was like, that, no, that's not how it works. So it's even the questions that people, or the, the topics that zoning doesn't address that people still have questions about that I think we need to be aware of.
I wonder if for, if for the March town meeting, if we could have, I think we, we try and mitigate and, and, you know, we can put things in the paper, Westboro TV, I think we need to do like a survey for people who actually attend town meeting. Where should, how should we like communicate with you, right? Like, do you want to attend a meeting? Do you want to attend a meeting at the library? Do you want to attend a meeting at the senior center? I think to get a better sense from people who actually attend.
Yep, I think getting suggestions like that, please feel free to give to Jenny, and we can certainly talk more about this at later meetings.
Just one more question. There were, I think, two select board members that voted against it. Did they ever put in writing their reasoning why?
We did send them a letter asking for that, and they're discussing it tonight, at their meeting tonight.
And we sent a letter to the advisory finance committee too, right?
Correct.
Which I think they, were they in?
Changed their.
They went from unanimous, unanimous support to, I think, seven opposed, one in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. But I was, I, I mean, before, before they changed their vote, I'm more curious about the select board, board members that voted against. I'd like to see it in writing.
Yes, yeah, we did request that, so.
We did request that, yeah. Now, John and I and Jenny had a meeting about that, and I, I think right away, we said, let's get something out to the select board and the advisory finance board right away and ask them why they had changed their votes essentially and what caused this. And so those letters went out right thereafter.
Yeah, late last week, yeah. But the select board's discussing it at their meeting tonight, and I haven't heard from the advisory finance yet.
Good, yeah. Yep, so that's how we were trying to, thank you for bringing that up, John, that's good. All right. The next item on here is the memoration of, memorandum of understanding between the select board and the planning board. I think you all got a copy of this.
Yes.
Had a chance to look at it. The one comment that I had, I was confused on page two by B. And I think I was confused. Because under B, you're talking, we're not really talking about a decision at that point, we're talking about a presentation. I mean, in other words, we're identifying projects which will be presented to the planning board for consideration and comment, not really approval at this particular stage was the way I kind of thought about it.
So my understanding of that was that is if the select board has an idea or a project that really should be under the jurisdiction of the planning board, they would then follow this process, give it to the director of planning, who would then present it to the planning board. The planning board then has the option to concur and bring it along the planning board process for approval or not. Because it would be, it's basically like if the select board in their discussion say, hey, we should change the zoning to be this in this district. They're not going to initiate that process, they're going to bring it to the planning board, and then the planning board has the authority to say, no, we're not going to take that up. That's how I understood it.
All right, because I, now that you've said that, makes more sense that way, because when I read it, it sort of didn't make sense in the way I was reading it. Because if it was the. So you're telling, so it's going essentially from the town board, I mean, the select board to the planning board, and then back to the select board. I mean, as they said, that's why.
Right, because it says, select board will receive a presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, following the planning.
The select board will receive a presentation, including proposed funding sources for the planning, with an opportunity to provide comments. So if the select board were to say, we want to put in a new road here, right? Planning board would be the ones that would undertake that, I, well, DPW would undertake that, but maybe we had to do the subdivision process or something like that.
Yeah.
And so because it would be under the planning board jurisdiction, we would be the ones responsible for identifying the funding sources and all that other stuff instead of the select board. So because the select board proposed it, and they're also in a board that has a say at some point in the process.
Right.
They would get a presentation basically saying, planning board's thought about it, here's our plan, we want to hear your comments.
All right, I guess, I mean, my concern is I just want to make sure that the planning board and the board of select are in sync as far as talking about various projects. In other words, we're trading information back and forth, and, you know, one is not stepping on the toes of another, but that each has kind of enough.
And I think that's what this is doing, because in this situation, right?
Yeah.
The select board has, has the catalyst to get that project started, and then they send it to the planning board because it's our jurisdiction, and.
Then it goes back to the.
Select board updates.
Right.
Because they need to be involved in the process, and so that's kind of what that addresses.
I'm just trying to make it a transparent kind of procedure which we're following, and I had some questions when I read through this.
Yeah.
How transparent it was really going to work.
So how is this any different than what it is today? Just, just.
It's just memorializing.
It's memorializing.
Because right now, it's just in the air, right? This is, this is how we understand this process to work, and there have been, there's been confusion on certain projects, BWAL being one of them, where select board's like, well, it's not our project, and planning board's like.
It's not really our project.
Whose, whose project is it?
Yeah.
And so there was a confusion as to who had what role in that, that project. And so this just puts it down as a, here is the process, select board's got it on their agenda tonight, we've got it on our agenda tonight, the boards can agree that this is the process we agree on, and then that's how it just, if there's any confusion or any questions is, okay, well, how would this project fit in this process?
There's never, yeah, there's never been a written process, and that's essentially what this is. And so it's coming before the board of select tonight, it's coming before us tonight, just really, as John said, to memorialize the process. There'd been some, there's been concern in the community that the process which is being used by the boards is really not open and public for everyone to see. And so this is a way to set things down in writing, so that the public is fully aware of the processes that are being followed.
And the select board did vote unanimously to endorse it, so I have the signed memos here. And they just asked that if the planning board does vote to endorse this, that we post it on the planning department page, and the select board will post it on their page.
So they'd like a vote this evening if we agree?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry, who, can you confirm who drafted this? Did you draft this in partnership?
Yes.
Yes.
You did, okay.
Yeah, we actually drafted the original, and then we, the chairs and the vice chairs of the select board and planning board discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Went through it.
All right, based on that, then if there are no more questions, could I have a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding?
Sorry, I have, I have a question. The select board's role in site plan and special permit applications as defined in the documents listed above, I'm looking at like number one for select board. It's not clear to me, although maybe this is just me needing to identify what that difference is, when, when the select board would have the site plan and special permit.
So what that's doing is saying, so A and B are subbullets?
Yep.
To one?
Yep.
And so the select board's role in site plan and special permit applications as defined in the documents listed above refers to.
Oh, what we said.
The general law, the town charter, general and zoning bylaws.
Okay.
The select board does, they have the authority for special permits for gas stations.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And we put it this way, so that if the zoning bylaws or general bylaws change, we don't have to also change this.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think that was the only thing. No other questions?
Okay.
Jenny, did they say that they would write us a letter about our zoning?
Yes, I don't know yet, I just, I just know about this.
Are you suggesting we wait?
Very convenient.
Well, we did, yeah, I don't know if it's happened on their agenda yet, but in the letter, which I'll send to you all, we drafted it, or I drafted it with Hazel, I'll send it to you all so you have a copy, but we asked for a written letter to describe the reasons.
It would be bad form, I think, John.
I mean, I, I understand what we're doing with this letter, I think it's a bit ridiculous that we have to do this.
Yes.
For years, the.
I know.
The boards have been in this town.
Yeah.
It's, it's crazy that we have to put this in writing, but.
And the way that it was written was not just for the current boards, but we, in several times, we've said, 15 years down the road, are people who are not involved in any of this going to know what we mean by this? And so we tried to craft it so that it was a longer term document. And it's, I don't think it's a reflection on the boards not working together or anything like that, I think it's just a lot of the time, we have these unspoken rules that people are not familiar with, and then when they get there, they, they ask, well, why is it that way?
Yeah.
And so now we have to put, why is it that way?
I mean, and it's hard because sometimes it doesn't help to put things in writing. So this is one of the things we're now facing, I think.
It's no, no different than zoning.
Yeah.
You can't have it all, there needs to be some.
Flexibility.
Gray area.
Right, exactly.
Some area left open for interpretation, yeah.
And I think this is, you know, the, one of the problems we've all been dealing with is that there's been more and more of a call for transparency. The board of select and the town manager are trying to do the best they can and become, if some members of the community feel that they are not being transparent, they are now trying to work towards being more transparent.
Sure, that's fair.
And that's one of the reasons for this particular agreement or memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
I've forgotten where we are, did I ask for a motion?
I move that the planning board endorse the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding between the select board and the planning board as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
I have two copies here, so don't leave before you sign it.
Okay.
Do you want to pass them?
You want to just pass them down?
Pass them down now?
Yeah. Because you're going to give your planning board updates.
Yeah, you don't need to listen to that.
Well, four of us can.
Well, of course, we could listen, but signing our name will not prevent us from listening.
I know.
It's you. I can only do one thing.
Right.
So for updates, we're very happy, we put out an offer, and she accepted for a new administrative assistant.
Oh, thank heavens.
Yes. We're very happy, so she will be starting on Monday and easing in, Tuesday is a holiday, and that's our typical.
Do we know what her name is?
Her name is Ann Marie.
What is it?
Ann Marie.
Ann Marie.
Yes, yeah. So she's excited to start, she gave a great interview, in her interview, she even mentioned that she watched one of our planning board meetings, which to me says a lot. But, so we're really excited to have her start and.
That's great.
Yeah.
I'm delighted.
Yes.
So is Kristen, huh?
Yep. Yeah, thank you to Kristen, though, for jumping in and helping out in the interim. It's definitely been very busy in our department lately, so we'll be happy when someone, you know, completes the department. The other update, so we, as you all know, we have been working through the Oda Street Improvement Project, or O Street Corridor Project, and we do plan to put that out to bid within the next couple of weeks. We're waiting for the final sign off from Mastot. And just a reminder, that project is going to be phased, it will be two phases due to the funding. The phase one will go from the Oda Street intersection to approximately where the target entrance is, maybe a little past that. And it will include the shared use path that goes along Oda Street, and then phase two will continue from there. So that project is funded through grant funding. They did a corridor study in 2021 through, I believe it was Atlantic Management at the time that financed that. And then for the design and, and construction, it was funding through Complete Streets, Mass Works, and Mastot. And we did have to apply for an amendment to Mass Works to be able to complete phase one of the construction with the estimated cost that we have, and we did receive the grant for the amendment of $2 million. So that will put us hopefully comfortable, where we still need to get bids back, but that will hopefully put us in a good position to be able to do at least phase one of the project.
What's, what's the, the ideal timing or the hopeful timing for actual construction?
Most likely, a real construction will happen in the spring of '26.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, that's sooner than I.
Yeah.
I thought you were going to say, oh, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, usually when you put these things out to bid this time of year, it's winter, you don't really get a lot done, maybe just. You don't really get a lot done, maybe just preparations, notifications to property owners, things like that. But we will still be working throughout the winter, just not actual construction.
Great.
Yeah.
Good, sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Reports of board members on town committees and CMRPC. The Design Review has not had a meeting. We're due to have a meeting on the 18th. I don't think we have met anything in between on that. There have been any other meetings?
Yes. So, for the Community Preservation Committee, we had a meeting last week. And we have five applications for, yes, for projects. It was a really, it was a good conversation. We basically talked through each of the applications. So, it was, it was one for the Midland Cemetery Restoration. So, restoring the, restoring parts of the cemetery, right? For, I think, 50 headstones?
Which, which cemetery is it?
Midland, so on the south, yeah. So, that, that was one. There were two that were related to trail improvements in town. One for the bridge, where is that, near Fisher Street, right? The, or no, Bowman? I don't remember the locations. But there were two, there were two that related, related to trail improvements. One that was more of a, an overarching, like land use strategy for our trails, our trail systems. And then there was also one for a portion of a new playground for Hastings, assuming there would be, assuming the town would approve the resist, the remaining budget at the next town meeting. So, basically, we talked through all five. We had some, we had feedback for all. Some we did, we thought met the criteria more than others. We had questions on all of the applications essentially for some more clarity. But it was exciting. I think we'll have some good examples to pull forth at the next town meeting.
Can you, can you use any of that for open space?
Yes.
For open space?
Yes.
Well, you don't have to use, and
Well
I mean, those are the categories. But if, if you don't use the money for that particular thing, it can go into a
No, it will, it needs to, it, a percentage needs to be designated to each, yeah.
20% for each category.
But so, if there isn't one for open space, you basically hold that money and it would grow, yeah.
Right, but you, like, you can only spend
Right.
a certain portion of the money on
Correct.
So, you can't use the whole fund for open space?
No.
No, no. It's proportioned out.
It's open space and recreation, historic preservation, affordable housing. Is that the only three?
No, there's another one.
There are five.
I thought there was four.
Four, there are four.
Maybe it's open space and then recreation are two separate ones.
Yes, they're separate, they're separate.
So, open space, recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So, 20% of the overall funds have to go to each of those. And then 20% can be used for any of them.
Yes, but you don't have to, yeah, but then you don't have to
You don't have to use the funding at that time, but you can't use open space funding and apply it towards historic preservation.
Right, and some of the things we talked about in the last meeting was building out, getting feedback on the overarching strategy and approach for how we want to treat the funds. So, basically, do we want to make the, you know, wait longer for some of the, for larger projects so that we can have a bigger impact like a few years apart? Or like, what does that look like, right? What, how are we, how are we doing that? So, we have not, that, we haven't decided yet. We did all agree, though, that for this year, we want to make sure that we get through whichever program, whichever applications would be the most impactful to the broader town. But it's exciting.
Thank you. Any other committee meetings? I don't think, as far as I know, Design Review is not met until later this month.
Capital Expenditures Planning Committee is organizing for our stretch of like two months of meetings and then no more meetings the rest of the year. So, that's starting now.
All right. We have minute, minutes, John? The 16th and
Yeah, we have minutes for September 16th and October 7th. Are there any comments or edits on the 16th of September? There are any
Except for, no, on the 16th, I think, wasn't Town Council here? Wasn't Justin here on the 16th?
I think that was the second.
Yeah, that was the second.
Is that the second?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Any changes? Any changes, comments, or edits on the October 7th minutes? All right, can I have a motion to approve the September 16th, 2025 minutes and the October 7th, 2025 minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Five, nothing.
Thank you, John. All right, we have upcoming meetings on the 18th of November and on the 2nd of December. Jenny, do we have anything, we do have things coming up. The project on Route Nine and Oak Street.
Yeah, there's the multifamily project that will be on the December 2nd meeting. They're actually presenting to the Select Board tonight for comments. So, if you want to watch that later on. And then, we anticipate some, another project, they haven't applied yet, but for the later December meeting. So, I don't know if this year we can get away with canceling. And, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's been very busy in, in planning, just people coming in and wanting to do projects. And then, we have the continuations that, you know, we had on tonight's agenda, so.
Well, thank you. Is there anything else anybody would like to bring to the board tonight? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Westboro TV.